All right, welcome to the January 22, 2025, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Aparna.
Present.
Commissioner Copley.
Present.
Commissioner Gagné.
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
Vice Chair Woodier. And I am Chair Weston. Commissioner Coleman is excused tonight. I'd like to thank the following staff for being present. Jeff Churchill, Ian Lefcourt, Becky Frye, and Chris Wyatt. Before we approve the agenda, I just want to note that the written materials were swapped. So for those following along, if you're not seeing the correct materials in the section we're in, please scroll down. And with that, I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's approved. And I also look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 8, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and that is approved. Next is time for us to hear our public comment and items from the audience.
Thank you, Chair. And first up, we have David M. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Commissioners and staff, I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. Here are some topics that the Redmond Planning Commission might consider discussing. Regarding sustainable development and environmental protection, discuss strategies to reduce carbon footprint and promote eco-friendly practices in new developments, and explore ways to incorporate green spaces and parks into urban planning. Regarding affordable housing and inclusivity, examine policies to increase affordable housing options, including inclusionary zoning and community land trusts, and discuss ways to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion in Redmond's communities. Regarding transportation and mobility, evaluate the city's transportation infrastructure, including pedestrian and cyclist safety, and consider alternative transportation options such as expanded public transit or ride-sharing services. Regarding public spaces and community engagement, envision new public spaces such as community centers, parks, and plazas that foster social connection and community engagement, and develop strategies to encourage public participation in planning processes. Regarding economic development and innovation, explore ways to support local businesses, startups, and entrepreneurs, including incubators and accelerators, and discuss policies to attract and retain top talent in Redmond's tech industry. Regarding disaster resilience and emergency preparedness, assess the city's preparedness for natural disasters such as earthquakes and floods, and develop strategies to enhance disaster resilience and response. Regarding digital equity and access, examine ways to expand digital access and affordability, particularly for underserved communities, and discuss initiatives to promote digital literacy and online safety. Regarding implementation and collaboration, to effectively address these topics, the Planning Commission could collaborate with local stakeholders, including residents and businesses, engage in data-driven decision-making using relevant statistics and research, develop clear implementation plans, including timelines and budgets, foster partnerships with regional agencies to leverage resources, and encourage community engagement through inclusive outreach methods. By addressing these topics and implementing effective collaboration, the Planning Commission can help create a more sustainable, equitable Redmond for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Hans G. Again, please state your name into the microphone and your address. You will have three minutes, and it should be on for you.
Yep. Hans Gunderson, 4836 159th Avenue Northeast, Redmond 98052. I'm stepping up to the phone, the microphone today because I received an email newsletter, which I enjoy, from the city, and it talks about how important urban forests are. And then I'm looking at around me, and I remember the group health hospital and the beautiful urban forest, which was clear-cut, replaced by something that is, in my view, ugly and not very particularly user-friendly. Right next to where I live, there is a redevelopment of something called the Onyx area. What's the plan? Again, to clear-cut all the trees that, at this point, have become reasonably good-sized trees, replacing them with a street grid, increasing density by about 200%, and putting kids, if we have kids, the kids are not allowed in most places anymore, then we don't build for kids. We are building what appears to be storage units for humans, not homes, neighborhoods. In this Onyx, they're planning on putting a little stamp for kids to play, which happens to be located in a green belt, which is supposed to be the covering or dividing or shielding the neighborhood next to it, a clear violation. I just hope that you will help design a city that has room for both high rises and high density, but also places where people can live in a home, not being fearful of being bought out by developers, then having a mega-home put right next to them, which is what's happening now at Tamrac Lane. I am fearful of my future, I'm fearful of the future of my kids and my grandkids, who, when they are in a neighborhood, are subject to high-level industrial traffic of Amazon, UPS, FedEx, delivering goods to everybody. We are building a very unfriendly place to live. It's in your hands to change that trajectory. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes everyone who signed up to speak.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we are going to start our study session on incentives and requirements in the 2025 code package for Redmond 2050. Before we begin, just to set the tone for what we're doing tonight, so we've been working on the code package since September. This is the final piece of work for the Redmond 2050, like parade, basically. We have a ton of policy that we passed over the summer that City Council approved. Our goal tonight is to get to a point of recommendation where we're just faithfully recording all of those policy decisions in our zoning code. And so, right now, we are looking to conclude the discussion on zoning, so for affordable housing, green building, and incentives, so that we can move forward to a recommendation. And we have 75 minutes on the agenda. I'm going to keep new discussion to a minimum, since we've had several months to discuss at this point, and we'll just see if we can work through what we have open. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Becky Frye and Ian Lefcourt.
Good evening, Commissioners. So for the order of obstructions for tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to start with the items that are in the issues matrix, so we can go through. And if any of those answers help with the next step, the next step will be going through the actual incentive program adjustments. So hopefully, as we go through the issues matrix, once we get to the affordable housing, we can have that discussion, and we can make a recommendation on what you want staff to include in that final proposal. And then when we get through the entire issues matrix, we'll go one through one, through the other attachment that we sent out that actually talks about what proposals came in and the impacts they have. Some of them are minor, some of them are pretty significant, and it's hard to tell when you're just looking at prioritization. So you'll walk you through some of the impacts of those choices, and then we'll record the Planning Commission direction on each of those, if you want to take the change, modify the change, or move forward. And again, so that we can bring a, hopefully, final version to you at your next meeting. Start with the issues matrix.
First up, we have item 20, which was a multi-pronged item for the matrix, which looked for clarity on the blended status quo before part of the before and after affordable housing financial feasibility analysis.
So Commissioner Van Nyman, I believe that's yours. Could you, mic, please? Thank you.
So I did look at that, and I appreciate the input. It was, it's, I, we can close it. I still, there are things I just have a hard time still getting through my head, but I think that is, that is clear enough.
Next, we had the alternative step-down proposal for Marymore, where the first three developments would have just the 10% set aside of affordable units, up to 200 dwelling units each. And this was from Commissioner Copley.
Yeah, I looked at the response from staff, and I can appreciate that the modest 0.1% increase to the yield on cost wouldn't be enough to cause people to decide to develop versus not develop. That being the case, we've heard from developers, we've heard from property owners, and land use law firms that have encouraged us to keep this to 10% so that we don't have a 10-year period go by where there's no development. We even got an additional note between last meeting and this meeting that stated that they would be likely, the landowners would be likely to lease their land for another 10 years to the existing tenants as opposed to sell it for a $7 million discount. So to me, I understand the 0.1% wouldn't make sense, but $7 million reduction in value to the landowner is significant, and that landowner is saying that if they got the 10% like we've done in so many other places, that they would be able to do the deal. So I just, I feel like, as they say, the math ain't mathin' here, and we could look at this, I would suggest looking at this such as, there's 450 units we get at 15%. If there's 3,000 units, it can be built in Marymore. We'd lose 30 of those for sure if we do the step-down provision, so 200 units per development, first three developments, we'd lose 30 units. But we would then very likely get 420 units versus potentially not seeing 450 units or 420 units either way of affordable housing for the next decade. I think that opportunity cost needs to be reconsidered, and I'm comfortable closing this if the staff won't change their minds on this. That's out of my hands, but I would strongly encourage staff to consider the idea that we lose 30 units for sure by doing this, but we also kick off development in the area and hopefully see 420 units of affordable housing.
Can I just break in for a second? Was this the one that you wanted to also disclose?
There was a comment from American Capital Group, which is a developer in this region, and I also wanted to flag the fact that American Capital Group is an investor in my company. So I mentioned that to Chair Weston prior to the meeting today, and I just want that on the record. My comment, however, is really about all development in that area and wanting to see more affordable housing go in there, or some affordable housing go in there, but I just wanted to state that for the record.
Appreciate the transparency. Thank you. Commissioner Van Nyman, do, perhaps, oh, I, so for tonight, I kind of want to let the people who haven't opened, we're just going to work through individual issues, and then we're going to have larger conversations afterwards. I did want to get staff's reaction to Commissioner Copley's initial question.
Yeah, as always, we appreciate the detailed feedback from our community partners. The discussion of whether or not this would delay development by 10 years, I cannot comment with such precision on what the economic future holds. The landowners know their property best. I also want to recognize that if development doesn't happen now, right, and the feedback stated that leases would be renewed and pieces like, is that a terrible scenario? Like, the people currently existing in those places get an opportunity to stay and figure out transition plans? Ultimately, this is a policy decision for the Planning Commission on how you want to approach this. There are trade-offs, as with most of the things we operate with. The comprehensive plan, which has been adopted, has clear policy direction for stewarding both mandatory inclusionary zoning and for affordable housing units at the 50% AMI. The analysis shown above seems to strongly indicate that there would not be a kickstarting of development from this. With that said, it may just be the purview of the Planning Commission to determine that the partnership warrants a step-down provision. I think the decision, though, should not be based around whether or not this would kickstart development. That seems unlikely, but all of those other policy and value considerations, I think, would be appropriate for the Commission to consider and provide your recommended direction.
I also just want to clarify, the proposal on the draft right now is 15% of units be affordable, and I just heard you say that if we don't do a step-down, you'd prefer we keep it at the existing 10%. The difference in the number of units that would be affordable in Marymore, between those two proposals, 10 or 15%, is actually about 150 units. So we would, if we kept it at 10%, we would lose 150 affordable units in Marymore. So just wanted to clarify that.
I misspoke. I'd like to keep it at 15, but I'm suggesting for the first three developments, it go to 10.
Okay, so it's not keep it at the existing 10%, but the first three projects at 10?
But for the purposes of this specific issues item, recognizing we'll have a broader conversation, can we close this one?
Yes.
22, this was a discussion, kind of a two-pronged, one about the engagement with partners and a list of the other things that are friendly for development but which are not reflected in the model. There's a list here, and I think we actually found a couple more that were not included. Just a quick note, number one is included, most of the others are not included in terms of the financial modeling, which speaks to the underlying through-line of the analysis, which is that the financial feasibility has conservative output findings. In reality, we would expect much better financial returns than what the model predicts because all of these other pieces are not included in the model, and that was a conscious choice for consistency of methodology.
Okay, I'm ready to close this. I appreciate the extra information, especially the pointer back to the website and the list of all the meetings and the content of those. That was actually, that answered my question as well as this, so thanks for including that, and I'm ready to close.
23, undeveloped and underdeveloped land in Marymore.
All right, so this, this one actually combined with one of the written public comments that provided a map that was actually helpfully color-coded with property owners, gave me a much better sense of the picture, and then also that combined with King County Parcel Viewer, where I just went and did some independent research also in the interim, answered the question. I was just trying to get a sense, and this pertains also to the previous question about three projects and the whole idea of a step-down in general, there really just, to me, isn't that much opportunity or land or availability in Marymore, so we're really talking about a finite set. I wanted that, those particulars, so I'm ready to close, but particularly because of the additional information that came through in public comment.
So there are still other open items on the issues matrix, but these are the ones directly related to the affordable housing provisions? Chair, how would you like to proceed with discussion?
Let's go through and do the other ones, too, because I think most of those are going to be pretty swift now that they have answers.
You got it.
We'll just simplify our path.
Some of them are really straightforward, very straightforward.
3.1, feedback on incentive priorities.
All right, so this, this one and also 10 are about Attachment A that we were given this week, so that's much more about just being given a scheme to discuss. I think we should have the discussion once we're actually doing the broader, if everyone's okay with that. I'm seeing nodding. Okay, great. So we'll close this one and 10, and then basically say we have the information, we just need to reach conclusions. This one's mine. Thank you for all the information about exercise trails and how they'll connect up and the parks, and I'm ready to close.
Just to add to that, I did speak to parks, and there's a lot of work that's happening over the course of this year and next year on wayfinding and signage, and in the next budget cycle, we anticipate a lot more work on inclusive design as well. So for the next several years, you'll start to see those pieces playing out, the implementation of a lot of the work that we've been doing.
I look forward to this. I think it's going to be great.
11.5, green building program and natural gas. Commissioner Aparna.
I think we can close this, but I know that we have the option of adding points. So I believe I had put in a response, email response, saying that we could have 40 points for complete 100% electrification and 10 points of incentives for electrification readiness. I don't think that was added here, but if staff is okay with that, I think that would work great, because I see that reflected in the incentives priorities thing, so I'm guessing it's already in, in which case you can please close this.
And just to clarify, we'll discuss that amendment request with the whole package of amendments.
Sounds good. Thank you.
11.7, duration of incentive program. Commissioner Aparna.
Yeah, I think both can, seven and eight can be closed, please.
15, new table describing different open space types. Chair Weston.
Yep, thank you for humoring me on this. I really appreciate the new line in the table, and I can close.
I think that might be all of them. Let's scooch through. Yep, looks like we got all of them. All issues matrix items have been closed.
Great, so now we have a choice between affordable housing discussion first or incentives first. I'd personally rather go with incentives because I think that kind of helps us keep the broader picture in our heads. Are people good with that?
So what I included in the packet is what I'll have up on the screen, but we have more information that's provided, or we researched more about the impacts of these, and we can share with that, but I'd love to go through them one at a time and just talk you through some of the things that we noticed, and then we'll just make a call on each of them as we go through, if we are going to move them into the final change, or if we're going to modify them at all. But the first one is taking a look at a couple of the rows of the affordable housing and just making some changes. You'll see that there's some shifts in prioritization to make that more important in a couple of different areas. This tends to have some impacts that are numerically significant, but at the same time comparatively as a part of the project, not as, see if I can say this in a better way. There is a significant change, but it's not like as significant as some of the other changes proposed. So for instance, taking that first one from medium-high to high, you'll see in the downtown outside TOD, it goes from 80 points to 105 points. That gives you an extra 0.24 FAR and an extra 5.3 feet, so it's a half a story increase. So that's over the entire project. I mean, that's a significant give, but it's not as significant as going to a whole nother floor by making that shift.
So it might be helpful for us here, as we're going through, two pieces of information I really felt were missing in this were, first of all, where the request was coming from, if it was another commissioner, or if it was someone in the community, or if it was after further investigation by staff, just that context is really helpful here. And then just a sense, if staff thinks this is a good change or an unintentional consequences sort of change where perhaps people are asking for something without understanding the underlying math, would be so helpful.
Most of the items in here are coming from planning commissioners, the bulk of them from an email from Commissioner Aparna, Commissioner Coleman and a couple of others. There's some in you from Chair Weston, you there. There are a couple that did come from staff, so if it is from a commissioner, would you like me to identify who suggested, or just say this is a commissioner request?
Maybe we could do the commissioner, if you remember, because I know this has been spread over months at this point, but just so that, because sometimes, I know I have one in here, for example, where I suggested it, I didn't understand the impact it would have, and I'd actually like to retract it now. So just giving people a chance to say now that they understand the model better, actually maybe not, and then we can have discussion on the ones where it's still open.
I will do my best, but I would ask if the commissioner who proposed it could also remind me, they came in over two months, so with four or five different sources from commissioners, so.
That's fair. Commissioner Aparna.
Yeah, this one was from me. I, okay, so the logic here, which I approached this was, in the TOD area, it's dense, it's got transit, it will have access to, you know, basic stuff like groceries and things within walking distance. Therefore, having a higher number of affordable housing units, a deeper affordable units is a, is a good thing. We should encourage it because they may not have cars, they also would be better connected because of the transit to go to their workplace or what have you. So that was my reasoning behind approaching it with very high. I don't know if it's right or wrong, but if the implication's not too bad, I would think that's a good way to. think that's a good way to go about thinking where we want the deeper affordable housing units. It's also the why we want it where we want it, right? So, yeah, so I'll just leave it open to the commission. If anybody has a contrary view, we're happy to hear what that sounds like, so.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
So we're approaching this exactly the way that I was thinking through it, as I was looking through it. It's like, I really want to hear why the request was made, what's the thought process? And then the second piece that you also mentioned, and Becky has alluded to, is how does this impact at the end of the day? Because what I'd really love to have is like, you know, the calculator that says, I'm a developer, and I'm going to go through, and I'm going to, these are the choices I'm going to make, and what does that end up looking like? How does this really impact the model? Because we could break it, right? Like, just by tinkering around with things, saying, oh, that looks like, I think that should be really important, and I think that should be really important, and I think that should be really important, and pretty soon you've kind of changed the whole dynamic of the way the model is supposed to work. So those are the two pieces of information that I want.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and there's a couple of things that, just to keep in mind, too, is that these are some of the further down rows of, in the affordable housing options. So obviously, we have, you know, the mandatory inclusionary doesn't count for the incentives, so anything above the mandatory inclusionary. We have a line for less than 2%, 2 to 5, 5 to 10, 10 to 15, and 15 or greater. And the adjustments were just proposed for the final two, but what that does is, for instance, in downtown, in the 5% to 10%, which would be the right above that, the points would be 60, and then if we made this change, then the points would go from, for the next one down, from, instead of 60 to 80, it would go from 60 to 105. So the shift between each of the different rows would be pretty significant. However, that is a significant additional affordable housing. So if you really wanted to highly emphasize those more units, you know, making a jump like that could potentially be something you would be supportive of. But it does, again, it, it makes that jump between the 5% to 10% to the 10% to 15%, there's a really significant jump at that stage.
So my weighing in on this one is that I can actually see it both ways. So when we've been hearing about community values and community priorities, affordable housing is consistently one of the very, very top. So making sure that that's appropriately weighted highly is, I think, to me, the most important work here. That said, one of the things that I really like about the process up to this point is that the modeling has been focused on making sure that we meet our objectives, and if this would be pushing us past it, I don't think it's a bad thing for the community, but I also don't necessarily know that it's required. So I could see going either way, and that's how I would evaluate it. Other opinions. Commissioner Van Nyman.
So you mentioned there's, the whole picture might be, maybe it would be easier to see, when you're talking about the jump, like the, is there a way to see the entries prior to that, the lower ranked ones?
Yes, let me...
Because it looks, I mean, part of what I wonder is, when you have the, those, those two final bands, both being very high, I mean, do you, do you want one to be, like the final one to be the only very high, and then the one above that to be high?
Yeah, and so you can see what we've done here is, there's generally, you know, a similar break. It's not always consistent between, but there's a similar break as we go up in those percentage increments. But then, if you, I'll just go over the more detailed one again. So for the, just this change here, this is the only one that we're looking at, for this change here, that number would be 80 to 105, and 115 to 130. And so you would have, this would be instead 105, and this would be 130. And then the one right next to it, just for context, 120 and 130. So just taking that downtown look, is that helpful? So it really puts an emphasis in the incentive on more units. And if that's a projection that you want to go, I mean, staff is comfortable with that, it just, we wanted to make sure that you understood the implication.
The degree of emphasis, yeah. Commissioner Aparna.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Becky. This is actually a little helpful. It would help to kind of go and do this before I started the other stuff, but I do understand the, at 50% AMI, it's deeply subsidized housing in that sense. So if we are to give more points for that, we are encour, like, in my head, it is for those people who, if we are going with very deep affordability, which is 50%, then I would like to encourage that by incentivizing it higher. That's why I put it at very high, because in my head, it is a, you have to incentivize that kind of behavior for it to work at 50%.
Yeah, and staff is comfortable with that. The one thing that I would suggest, if Planning Commission does okay moving this forward, that we had just gotten input from the downtown and other, but I would recommend that we do not have a lower point system for overlake. And so at minimum, we adjust the overlake numbers to match what we're doing inside and outside TOD, than what you're recommending to for downtown as well. But again, it's, we didn't ask for prioritization on overlake, because we'd already done that, but I don't want to undercount overlake.
Yeah, I think it should be proportional, right? I mean, it has to be fair.
Right.
So I don't think we should say, hey, you know what, if you're in this place, you get these separate things, and in this place, you don't get these, right? It's a, it's a policy, it's, these are values that we're encouraging across the city.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
I'm just trying to understand why the reasoning behind having the final two bands, 10 to 14 and 15, and additional 15%, both be the same weight.
That's actually not uncommon. There have been a couple of different scenarios where we, we've reached like a cap before you actually get to the final version that you could go. So it's just more of a clarification that we'll give you up to a certain point, and please do do more, but at a certain point, we're not going to change the numbers. That's not necessarily going to work in every situation, but there's nothing greater than very high either. So very high is our max.
But there is in the one above it, right? There's high, and then there's very high.
Yeah.
They're not the same, they're not weighted the same.
But you see, we've done, we do do the same stacked here, and as we go down into others, you'll see the priority ranking will go. So we don't necessarily need it to go higher every single row we go down for every single item. It's just in general, we'd like to see that.
All right, do we have a sense, maybe we'll start with Commissioner Aparna, now that you've seen more of the numbers, how are you feeling about this one?
I still stick by it, because I think the principle, at least in my head, is sound, so I'm going to stick with it.
With the recommend, or the request.
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there a general agreement about that? I'm seeing a lot of nodding. Would anyone like to counter it? No, okay, I think we're happy with that plan to go follow the request that Commissioner Aparna made.
Okay. Okay, so then there are a number of green building ones. The first one is related to the Salmon Safe Urban Standards. Again, it just really emphasizes, and in some cases, the prioritization jumps significantly. Remember that there is medium, medium-high, high, in the, so I mean, like, there's a couple of jumps that are happening when you take it from medium to high, and there's even more when it goes from medium to very high. So what the change in that then does is actually fairly significant. So the point system here, it goes from 37 to 75, or 37 to 90, when you make those adjustments. And the FAR for those, so this is one where we really wanted to have a conversation with the commissioners about, yes, it is a prioritization, but is what we're giving in exchange for that comparable to other things at that same level of prioritization and the same level of points? I mean, and this is, this is one of those where we agree that it's a really high priority, but the points given, when we label it high or very high, is out of sync with some other things that are similar to it.
And can you remind us the origin of?
This one is from Commissioner Aparna. I think almost all the green building ones are from Commissioner Aparna.
That's possible. All right, so Commissioner Aparna, now that you've seen it, did you want to just react?
Yes, I definitely would like to, seeing how the points add up, I don't think it's, it's appropriate to do what I suggested. So I would think that, Becky, please remind me, is there like, from medium to high, is there something in the middle?
Yes, and we could also just do a manual adjustment, like, it's currently 37, you know, we might not necessarily feel that it's equivalent to a major jump in our prioritization, but we might want to give it a few extra points, and maybe we bump it to 40, you know, and that equivalency does give it, you know, an extra bonus on top of that.
So the only reason, so let me give you the reasoning behind it. The reason I did this was not, when we increase density and we have so much activity going on, I worry about the water that is being managed out. I know we have good stormwater management plans in place, but the quality of the water and the runoff will change. So that, it was to encourage a thought on what the, the water runoff, the quality of the water runoff. But that being said, actually, we could just bring it back to mediums, and I would be okay with not proposing this at all.
Okay, thank you.
If the commission's okay with that, so.
Yeah, I'm seeing consensus here, that seems right to us.
And just to bring that back here to...
I just want to say, thanks again to staff. The numbers-based conversation is very helpful in terms of taking the priorities and making decisions out of them. I really appreciate these tables.
Okay, so, let's go to the next one. So electric supply, this is on the issues matrix, and so we put this in here from Commissioner Aparna, changing the fully electric points, and she had actually added in her email to do a electric-ready option as well. So you'll see from medium-low all the way across the board, she had some changes to almost all the zones, to get it a little bit higher into medium or medium-high, and that is taking it from 20 points in those zones to 40 or 35 in the CMU, with the new proposed electric-ready then being at a 10 and then 5. And so you'll see that that is a pretty significant give in the TOD area and in Marymore, it also levels off a little bit further out. Now, just a reminder, too, that the, the points and the building height vary because we have different prototypes and different building costs. So this is all based on a calculation of what's allowed in each zone, and we're using the highest cost prototype that's allowed in that zone. So if you do a lesser cost, you know, you just get extra credit, even though you're not doing the highest point. So if you're trying to wonder why these numbers are different, it's because different prototypes are modeled for different zones, and inside the TOD area, you can go higher, so different prototypes, so. But you can see here, too, that, that, again, it doubles the point system out, gives you, right now, you would get an extra four feet, this is because it is double, this is an easy one, it would double it, giving you an extra four and a quarter.
All right, Commissioner Aparna, do you want to do rationale? I know this one's important to you.
So this was actually changed because of the fact that we originally mandated electrification in some of these zones, okay? So since we can't do that anymore, given the passage of Initiative 2066, we, I worked with Jenny Liebeck on trying to understand what the options were from a perspective of our policy goals of decarbonization, which we can't mandate, but we can certainly incentivize. So that's why it, it moved from a mandatory requirement in some of these zones to, let's give it some points. So I think the point system looks good, but I leave it open for discussion.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Can you speak to the feasibility? If you worked with Jenny, I assume these are all feasible, because we've had some conversations here about the feasibility based on PSC and all that.
This, this is incentivizing, so the feasibility is more from a legal standpoint that has been addressed, that this is still within our purview, we cannot mandate anything. The feasibility from a perspective of PSC, from what I understand, the theta, so PSC is still required to decarbonize over X number of years. That law has not been struck down. So they would have to increase capacity over time, and like, the idea that these buildings are going to go 100% electric at the scale that the whole city will go electric overnight is unlikely in any scenario. So I think it's feasible, because it was mandated before, so I'm guessing the feasibility was already checked before it came up in front of us. We okayed that first part, but then I-2066 came in, so we couldn't do it anymore. Does that answer your question, Tara?
And just a second, Becky's going to step in.
Oh, you can finish your, once you're done with this, I'll just...
You'll add more.
Great.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't asking, we weren't incentivizing something that was not obtainable.
In some areas of the city, the electric grid is not capable of sorting it today, and that's why PSC has done an update, saying that there's some work happening that it won't be ready in certain areas for another two or three years while they get their work done. So I guess it would depend, they would still need to get a certificate from PSC that they could support that level for any project. If PSC comes in and says, no, I can't do a fully electric, we can't do it, then that would be the response.
That's a different possible stage of the decision-making.
Yeah, they may not choose that.
This is supposed to stand the test of time to some degree.
Yeah, and this would, I mean, some areas, it would be fine, the grid can support it today, some areas, it just can't, and so it would really depend on that. But I did want to actually, I pulled the draft up right now, so you could see the level of points throughout the green building program right now, so you could see what this would do, jumping it from 20 to 40 would make it on par with the most expensive and intensive clean building performance standards up above, which is 45, but most of the green building points are much less. So just, I wanted you to see the context in that, just for your decision-making, if that helps.
And can you remind us what else would go into the green building, aside from the electrical, like the full electric?
All of this is the green building category.
Sorry, maybe I misunderstood your comparison.
So what this does here, changes, well, probably, again, we'd go 40, but the left So what this does here, changes, well, probably, again, we'd go 40, but the left fully electric building would go, again, 40, 40, 40. And then this would add another line in here that would say electric-ready.
Right.
And something like this. But I just wanted to show you the bigger context of all of them in there, so you could see how that relates to the other green building incentives.
All right, other commissioners? I just want to, she's had a chance, so I just want to see if anyone else has opinions on this. No? Commissioner Parna?
I just wanted to say that the green building, some of these rating systems might even allow for electrification, okay? But by and large, a lot of them have other, you know, you can go from indoor air quality to water to having the site next to a bus stop. Any of these could earn points in a green building certification, all right? So what Becky's talking about in terms of the high-performance building standard, that is, will probably require electrification only, but it's also requiring you to be super efficient. So electrification plus efficiency would be that model building code. So it's appropriate that it's lower. I don't know if that's making sense to folks, but yeah.
So you're still supportive of it now that you've seen the points?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to counter that?
I just want to understand it fully compared to, like, I'm not the expert. I just can see what Becky's saying. When we look at it in perspective, like, are, is it commensurate with the other things that we're incentivizing? Like, are we, all of a sudden, we've pulled out one thing and given it much more weight compared to something else that, you know, and do we have it set the way we want? I don't know the answer, I'm just asking the question.
To me, it seems like an interim step, given that the original goals can't be met at this time, given that there was a failure of an initiative. Yeah, to me, it feels appropriate. I'm not, not as tied to this one as I was affordable housing, but it's, to me, it's a positive step that matches the policy goals of Redmond 2050.
Like, in theory, you've, you have two, you know, a slate of options that the developer is trying to choose between to get, and, like, they're going to, in theory, identify the ones that are easiest for them, and the most points. And if you don't have it weighted correctly, you could kind of screw yourself over. So I'm just trying to make sure we have it weighted correctly.
Chair, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
So Tara, so here's the thing, from the policy standpoint, Redmond 2050 puts a lot of emphasis on green building, but more emphasis on decarbonization. And that more emphasis is what is reflected in the fully electric building right now. Now, from a perspective of energy efficiency and decarbonization, those are the two big ones we are grappling with. There are others, like water conservation, trees conservation, and all of that, which are in the urban zones, important, but not as important. And that is what's in the green building program, that's in the charter, that's in the policies. So from a perspective of how the city has envisioned itself, it's about decarbonizing, reducing emissions. So this fully electric thing, which was mandated previously, is, goes a long way in that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just, too, also for reference and context, a residential floor is typically, you know, 10 feet in height, and a commercial is 12 feet. So in some of these, you're giving them, you're almost getting them an extra floor just for, with electrification. So just keep that in mind as well. Staff is supportive of making an adjustment, but I would probably be a little bit more comfortable with, instead of jumping all the way to medium-high and skipping, to just keeping it at a medium, like you've done in CMU, if that's comfortable. I can make the change to medium-high if the planning commission would go that. I'll be supportive of that, and I'll make that change, but...
I think that's fine, Becky. We could put it as medium and see if, you know, if people want to do it, right? The important thing is it's there. And if that changes the points too much, I would worry. But, like, personally, the draft points was 20. I would say go at least 30. It should not drop below 30, because then there is no incentive to do it.
Yeah, and I would be comfortable with that if the planning commission is comfortable with that.
Yep, I'm seeing broad consensus on that one. So we'll move it to medium with 30 points. And that was great.
I'll double-check with, after we go through, but okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for the discussion.
They'll probably go a little bit faster as we go through, you know, now that you're...
Those were the two big ones.
Yeah. So yeah, so the tree preservation, the request was to jump it to medium in most of the areas, and to change it from 40 to 60% of retention for significant trees. The point jump here and the height, building height, just for tree retention, is a little bit beyond what I would personally be comfortable with. I'm okay with jumping the numbers maybe a little bit, but going from 5 to 35 seems like it's out of context with some of the other changes that we've made and the point system that we're giving credit for. We love tree preservation and tree management, and we've got a lot of ways that we can do that. This just seemed like a really significant jump.
Can you remind, most of the commissioners haven't been here for the tree code. Can you remind us what a significant tree is? Specifically, is there an actual list of trees, or is it based on measurements?
No, it's based on diameter and size. And so... So significant tree is any healthy tree, six inches in diameter, or any tree, four inches, it's determined to be significant. A landmark tree, then, is over 30 inches in diameter, so...
So this is not addressing our largest trees? This is...
It's not just all trees, it's very specific type of tree.
Right.
Not size, but also type?
Yeah, significant tree is, has a meaning. There's a definition.
No, I know, but like, did we, did we talk about, like, are alder and cottonwoods considered, that are six inches considered significant trees? Because they're scrap trees.
Well, keep in mind that the tree code is going to be updated here soon.
My understanding is that it is by DBH, the diameter, and is agnostic to tree species.
Oh, that's interesting.
So we're a little different than surrounding cities in the way we do it. Okay, so then, back to our five versus 35 points for this one. And can you remind us where this request came from? Was this Commissioner Parna?
Commissioner Parna.
Commissioner Parna, do you want to do rationale?
So I didn't realize the points would jump so much. I agree that that's a disproportionate jump completely. I would say that if you're making it 60%, because, you know, we've heard, even tonight, we've heard a public comment about trees, if people are going to retain a good number of trees on their site, this is highly unlikely to be done with 60% of the trees, I'll be honest. So what we could do is, I would say, keep the old points, but move it to 60%, because I don't, or, I don't know, I'm trying to get confused here, but, or we can just retain it at 40% and leave the points the same. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I'd prefer to retain it as written. I think this is one of those cases where it reflects community values, but the points, like, add additional context, and I like the way they were to begin with.
Okay, we leave it as is and switch it back to 40, then. I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Coop, please.
Thank you.
Would staff and the commissioners be comfortable with going to medium-low, just because there is a bump there in points? And then if we're at 40%, 40% is not impossible. You could certainly get some points that would help you to build more, but, you know, retain some trees in the area, because I would like to incentivize that higher than low, if possible.
Yeah, certainly, and we might, I'll have to go back into the system and check what that would mean, but it would, could still potentially get at higher points than what we have today, you know? It might go up to 7, 8, 10, depending on what the calculation in the spreadsheet is. It just wouldn't jump to that, that 35.
I like that. Commissioner Van Nijm? Okay, I'm seeing consensus for that one.
So materials management, that's a decrease. So from medium-low in our centers and urban mixed use, just to low across the board. It has a two or three-feet implication.
Commissioner Parna, was, if this is yours, can you do the rationale?
So what I, because when I was looking over everything, and I was like, oh, everything can't be, like, super high. So what I kind of realized is that it's a good thing, this is very aspirational, but it's also very difficult to do, okay? So we don't have to prioritize it highly. If somebody really wants to go for it, awesome. This is the future, but it's also quite, like, distant future, so therefore I reduce the points. I don't know if that's making sense, but yeah. It made sense when I voted, okay?
Yeah, I just, I want to check that back with staff, if that matches their understanding.
When Jenny and I walked through the proposals, she was comfortable with medium-low and low. If we want to change it to low all the way across the board, I don't see a major issue with that. We can always adjust it up a little bit later if that becomes a higher priority. She's in the beginning stages of redoing the ESOP, so as we go through the ESOP, if she needs to adjust the prioritization of any items or add new items, we're talking about, we've already started talking about a few new items that might be added, it might change the scaling of the prioritization either way. So staff is comfortable making this change, but we could leave it as is also.
All right, I'd be comfortable with this change. How's everyone else feeling? All right, I think we'd like to go with that.
All right, so inclusive design, this is a combination of, Adam had sent in one, and a couple of these are from the community or staff. So this one is a mixed bag. But one of the things that was from the planning commission was just changing the accessible housing more than 25% ADA. And then staff and community had talked about, well, we have a bonus for affordable, 100% affordable, and we have a property owner in downtown who would like to do 100% of visitable or ADA units. So do we want to add in there, hey, if you're going to go all the way on getting a unit of design, maybe adding a line in there to give you that extra credit to show, yes, it's really expensive to do the entire complex that way, let's have a recognition of that? So this is a combination of those proposals and conversations. So they, it is, the point system here is significant, though. So if we want to make some adjustments to the numbering, that would be great. But the ADA units are also affordable units, so just keep that in mind. And the affordability and ADA combined makes it a pretty expensive item to do, which is one of the reasons why the point system here is high, and it is comparable to our affordable housing point system.
This is a deep need in the community. I support this utterly. I'm really happy to see this, and thank you for the context. Does anyone else have opinions? Commissioner Gagne?
So I had thoughts on the ground-floor ADA units, because I think that we got community feedback, and there was a specific request that the commission take into consideration the deep need that folks who have mobility issues need to be, A, need to have ground-floor accessible units, because of what just happened when we all lost power, right? And if there are folks who require motorized wheelchairs, for example, they're stuck, they're left in their unit because they don't have an elevator if the power goes out. Yeah, or, yeah, or outside their unit, absolutely. And that also, having it on the ground floor near Marymore or near to transportation is a high priority for our folks with mobility issues. So I wonder if we can raise the priority, because all across the board, on the ground-floor ADA units, it's low. And I'm wondering if we can increase that, because I agree that we have a deep need in our community, and we've received specific feedback from community about this issue. So I would like to see that higher.
And I just noted, the coloring on this one is off, too, so I apologize for that. Oh, I also did want to point out that, and Commissioner Gagne was the one that forwarded the request for the ground-floor ADA units. And then the more than 25% ADA actually included two decreases in prioritization that I wanted to point out. And so the, it goes from very high in downtown inside TOD to just high, and in urban mixed use, the same thing. And just, it keeps very high in Marymore, not necessarily because of that was the request, but because I vetoed the request to make that one go down to high. And so just wanted to point that out. The request from the commissioner was just to do high for all of those zones, but outside of the inclusionary pilot neighborhood program, we didn't feel comfortable dropping that one down. But that is a decrease in prioritization. So we might want to make a slight modification to the combination on that one as well, and not just considering a modification on the ground-floor ADA units.
Sir, that last part lost me. Can you say one more time?
There's two things I would like to have on the discussion. One, Commissioner Gagne, was like, can we increase the low to a little bit greater than low, to higher prioritization? And I was saying that we might also want to bump the inside TOD and the urban mixed use back up to very high and not change them to high.
So I personally would agree with both of those. Yep, okay. Would anyone like to counter? No. Okay, great. So I think both of those are, everyone here looks like they're in agreement.
I'll find that note later. Okay, visitable units, there was a significant request to readjust the distribution of priorities there, and so just, you can see through...
Could you please remind me what this, what a visitable unit is?
I believe this came from Commissioner Parna.
I don't know this terminology.
The visitable unit?
Yes.
Oh, the visitability standards are where you have a zero-step entry, a wider hallway, wider doorways, and an ADA bathroom on the first floor. And there's the one other thing, too. It's a standard, it's five, oh, yeah, the bathroom is, the walls are built to pre-support future additions of grab bars. So it allows for it to be convertible over time, and the cost is negligible, but it decreases the cost of remodeling to make it ADA by several thousand dollars.
Great, and can you remind us what the consideration, or what the request is here?
It was decreasing the prioritization. So you'll see... So you'll see um like in Marymore, it's like medium, high, medium, high, high, very high to medium, low, medium, low, medium, 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 very high. So it decreases the prioritization of the visitability units across the city. Uh, this is one that stuff is not that comfortable with. Um, oh, we can certainly adjust it if we need to, but it is something that came up with our discussion in our community that having um housing units that are at minimum visitable so that they can convert as a resiliency, as supporting of aging in place. I mean, it really progresses a lot of our goals in our community. So supporting visitable units is one of the higher priorities, lower cost, easier to implement items. So decreasing the prioritization here um just seems a little ad against some of the things that we're trying to do.
Counter the goals. Um, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Aparna. She can explain her rationale quickly and that looks like there's comments from other commissioners.
So I think I was looking at it from ADA versus visitability, sorry. Uh, my rationale was if you went straight all hog for ADA, that's the, you know, that's the ultimate desired outcome, right? But if you're talking about it from a perspective of lower cost, I would still say that it very high in a lot of places in my head versus affordability. I don't know. I so I'm now confused and I'm happy to listen to the conversation because I think for me, the ADA units become a higher like I would shoot for the bigger one in my my view, you know? So anyway, yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Gagne, I thought I saw you.
So Becky, I think you had mentioned that the affordability and the ADA in some ways go hand in hand.
Yeah, the um the requirement for the incentive for the ADA units is affordability goes with them. Um, so there's a percentage of them that have to also be affordable. Um, and that just has an extra cost implication, right? Because that was a request from our community because there is a significant need for affordable ADA units out there, not just ADA units. And so that's why in the incentive program, it ties those two together. And it doesn't just say it's an ADA unit out there, it ties them together. Um, but um Commissioner Aparna is right, this is a significantly less costly item to pursue. So if you do want to adjust some of the numbers down, that that's fine. Um, but maybe this deep of a drop is I think where staff was just wanting to have that conversation.
Vice Chair Wood here.
I mean, I would just say that if they go hand in hand and the cost is is minimal, they should our prioritization should be consistent with the ADA. Like I I wouldn't de-prioritize it.
Yeah, so.
Oh, um, the visitable units are not the same as ADA units. Um, so the ADA units are, there's much more requirements in order to make a full-blown ADA unit. Um, the visibility is just those five items.
So it's to me, this, um, the way to think about this is this is inclusive design. So ADA is the full um like supportive housing that's flexible and that's geared towards specific needs and accommodations and that sort of thing. Um, this would be much more supportive of a lot of different potential scenarios. ADA is certainly one of them, but aging in place is a huge one. Um, it's something I really hear clamor for from people, especially who are currently in single-family homes and would like to move to a next chapter and stay in Redmond. So to me, this is one of those ones where it's, the cost really isn't high. Um, but it, I think it's um a real like lifestyle improvement for people who want to stay in Redmond and are facing limited options in new construction. So I I personally like it. I would keep the higher. I think it's cost effective. Commissioner Coopley.
It looks like the uh request was to bump it down two levels uh from medium, high to medium, low. Would it be possible, because the cost is less and the requirements are less on the visitable, just to bump it down one level as opposed to, you know, scooping it all the way down two? Because I agree, it does seem like commissioners want to incentivize this, but it doesn't seem maybe fair or equitable to incentivize it as highly as something that costs quite a bit more like the ADA units.
But it, well, I'm not sure I agree with that one.
So keep in mind too that the prioritization that you've provided here is only one half of the equation. We have the cost-related points that aren't, we're not adjusting. Those cost points are just a fraction of what goes in to the total. So what we're looking at from tonight is just the the half of the equation that talks about the priority points. Um, what we could do and maybe is we just say, hey, let's split the difference in the change. That, yeah, let's let's maybe make it a little bit more of a pyramid, but not necessarily go down two ranks, maybe only go down one at the maximum. Um, or we we could keep it the same. I think from the staff's perspective, eventually, we'd love to see that visitable units are a requirement and they're just mandatory, that all housing is visitable. So pushing towards that and really heavily incentivizing that um helps us get that to become the norm. And that's one of the reasons why we put it super high in our conversations internally. Um, so even though it looks like the point systems might be overly high, it's really trying to push us to something that is normal um in development too. So just from a staff perspective of where we were at, that's great. We're gonna go around and do another loop, so starting with Commissioner Aparna and then we have more comments here.
Um, I Becky, thank you for what you shared just now because that actually changes in my mind a lot of things. If this is the overall direction we want to take and it's sort of like the opening salvo, if you will, then I would say go back to the higher points and, you know. It, the only difference is if you are adding the cost perspective, ADA versus visitable, then and that makes a little bit of a difference in the final outcome. I would be happy about that because we cannot treat it the same. But I'd like the idea that if this is what we are headed towards, then we should definitely keep it at a higher priority and then I would just pull back on changing the points at all.
All right, so we have about fifteen more minutes. Do we want to do more comments on this one or are we? Yeah, Vice Chair Wood here.
Yeah, I just had one question. Is it, given what has been said so far, is it, is it a bad thing if if this is more attractive to developers than the ADA?
No, um, because we need more visitable units than we need ADA units.
There we go. All right, so I think we're comfortable with that, keeping it as was pre-recommendation.
Thank you. Alright, um, IDD housing, it's just again, we have, it's the same. If we have a hundred percent affordable, a hundred percent ADA, if we can have a hundred percent IDD units. This actually comes in handy with some of our smaller nonprofits who do IDD housing, supportive housing. Um, again, it just adds a new allowance on that. Um, IDD housing, if it is a hundred percent housing, doesn't just incorporate um the requirements of the accessible and ADA units, but it typically also comes with higher cost materials. Uh, they have to be glued down better, they have to have extra insulation and soundproofing. Um, because it is a fully supportive housing product, it just tends to have some slightly higher building requirements. So again, just adding that, not just a percentage, but going ahead and adding a hundred percent line item in there um is just a reflection of those conversations with our community.
All right, I'm seeing approval. It looks like yes, so we have agreement on that one.
Oh, and just uh this is from staff and community, not the planning commissioner.
Correct.
Um, okay, so the next one was a request to decrease the prioritization for urban design checklist. Um, and so it takes them from high and very high down to medium. Um, this may sound counterintuitive, but um I do support making some adjustments going down because when we looked at the point system application, the universal design checklist and the cost of those um did seem a little out of whack, but this dramatic of a shift is something that went a little too far for us. So we would recommend maybe just splitting the difference on this one.
Sorry, let's do mics. Um, so Commissioner Aparna can hear.
Where did this request come from?
I believe this was a commissioner request, but I can't remember which commissioner.
I'm just checking my notes to see if it's me. Yes, it was me, yes. So the reason I was looking at this is because this is a very new concept for our people. I thought like initially, it's sort of like a tentative step in as opposed to go all in. Um, that was my my approach to it because I was I was trying not to increase the points everywhere across the board. So when I said affordability was high, like, and I put all my chips in that, on that play, it was also to see that I don't overshoot. So I'm okay with staff giving me guidance on like how this should be, but I still feel this is a very new concept and um adaptability is something that I'm not sure will happen. Uh, like, i- if you look at it from a perspective, I'm a, I'm a big fan of universal design, inclusive design. So the question is, we've got so many, many buckets now. We've got the ADA, we've got the aging in place, uh, livability units. Uh, so for me, they all add up because some of these will hit multiple buckets. So is there a way to understand what a unit would do? Or the features, are they only for external common areas?
All right, okay, so I think we have that question.
So there are different level of checklist. I've worked for the last couple of years within Northwest Universal Design Council to look at what the features are would be to go beyond the ADA to do the universal design. So what it does is it takes that ADA minimum that is mandatory on the codes and says, where do we need to make adjustments to make it really more usable for more people? Um, and there are features for building sites and residential units. Um, there's a lot that goes into each of those different parts, but it's approach, wayfinding, signage, um, sound, attenuation, sensory integration, um, just general accessibility things that are just more inclusive than the ADA minimum standards that don't meet their community needs. Um, that being said, when we we did the cost evaluation and whatnot, a lot of these could be incorporated at a relatively lower, easy cost if it's really planned from the very beginning. Um, and it is a direction that we do want to go. However, we do have in the next budget cycle, a full implementing universal design budget item that we want to propose out there for project for that year. If we want to reevaluate this category after that project is done, that might be something we can come back to. But I would suggest that we still keep Marymore very high because that is our pilot neighborhood for inclusive neighborhood. Um, so if you do want to drop everything down, just to, again, we agree the numbers ended up being a little bit higher, uh, but I would still keep them very high for Marymore.
All right, Commissioners, would you, first of all, maybe let's break this down. Do we agree with Marymore staying high? Yes. Would people like to drop the numbers for other neighborhoods? And zoning types? I'm personally comfortable with them being at the original level or dropping somewhat. I don't, I I think this continues to support our goals here of making sure that people are met with fa- with the types of housing that they need. Um, but I see flexibility here. Commissioner Coopley.
Just for clarity, is getting a VH getting a static number of points? So if I'm getting a VH in affordability or I'm getting a VH in inclusive design, am I getting the same number of points?
No, um, because some of them, we had to scale based on cost because some items cost two hundred dollars and some items cost five hundred thousand dollars.
Sure.
Right, so we still, we had to provide some scaling in the priorities for some of those things that are very, very low cost.
That makes sense to me and I was worried that by leaving VH in the universal design section that we could steer someone away from building affordably by, you know, opting into universal design. So I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
And just a reminder too, that in the centers, they have to do one of each of the five major categories. So they have to do affordable something, they have to do green building something, and they have to do universal design something. Um, and again, if it's a high-cost, low-cost item, we don't care, we're not tracking that. Um, but it it's not a either or, you're not giving up affordability to universal design.
Um, Commissioner Van Nijm.
I would just say that if this is something that is highly desirable, whether it's brand new or not, then it should be weighted accordingly with a high priority. I mean, if if you, if you don't get any takers because it's new and maybe not something very attractive to people, then okay. But you you did, you weighted it accordingly. It's, you don't wait something lower that's gonna take a lot of effort for them because then you're never gonna get any takers.
I agree with that logic. All right, I'm seeing broad consensus on that. So I think we're going to keep at the level ahead of the or the request for the change. Ian.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I will note that it is eight-thirty and it is staff's hope that we can get concrete direction from the commission on both the incentive package in front of us and the affordable housing components so that we can bring a recommendation and report next planning commission meeting. Uh, so with that said, I wanted to volunteer that item seven, the annual code cleanup training, that can absolutely be moved to a later meeting if we want to invest our time more on these decision point items.
I would really value that. I'm seeing big nods. Yes, please. Do I need to do anything, probably change the agenda, or shall we just?
We'll be able to just note that on the next one and we're good to go. Thank you.
We do have a a several more pages to get through, just ran through. Um, some of these should be a little bit easier to do. The um, the request here for the sensory room modifications, just to to lower it down. Um, again, just a similar context. I do think that we overranked them from a point system and I could do a scaling on that. Uh, we did not apply a scaling for cost on this one. Um, however, we did get cost estimates for sensory room integration that included soundproofing and a number of different specific things that are semi-costly to do to to get a fully in there. Um, but the the points assigned initially are are a lot higher than what from a context standpoint. So we we are okay with adjusting the points down, but we would want to keep a higher priority in Marymore again, just because it's a pilot inclusive neighborhood. If the commissioners are comfortable with that.
Yep, I think adjusting the points down is great. I think keeping Marymore high is great. And I'm seeing nodding, so that looks good.
Um, and then we get into building site for man uses. I believe all of these are Commissioner Aparna as well. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Aparna. Um, but it's a a number of different adjustments in prioritization. Um, but there's like buildup for restaurants from very high goes down to high. Um, and then emergency management staging goes up from medium, low, and medium to high and high inside downtown.
So a bunch of these ones were actually mine.
Oh, okay.
So co-location of child focus for child-friendly businesses, increasing the priority. Um, in the last two, um, is just that, to me, this seems like a part of a complete neighborhood and um it's one of those things where it's a relatively small point value for a huge um like quality of life improvement for families. And I think that that's really important. I think that's one of the things that makes Redmond nice now. And I want to still see it in the new. it in the new construction. So I felt very strongly about this one. I would like to see the priority raised. Commissioner Copley?
I also strongly support raising the priority of the co-location of child focused or child friendly businesses. We also heard from a public comment tonight about maintaining neighborhoods for kids and accessibility and designing neighborhoods that way. And I think that's important. So I'll second that.
General yea or nay on that? Okay, I'm seeing nodding, that's great. And then emergency management staging and storage, this is one where the numbers were so helpful. I didn't realize that it was a smaller space. And so I think this was a very post windstorm, post bomb cyclone. I was like, we need emergency storage everywhere. Now that I understand the points a little bit better, I'd like to rescind this one and just go back to the original proposal.
Can you talk about why you wanted those to go to high originally?
So I felt like when you were looking at where we would want emergency supplies to go, it was mostly misunderstanding the definitions. I was thinking, when you figure where you want emergency supplies owned by the city to be stashed, the access to me seemed really important. And that didn't seem matched in the priority levels that I was seeing in the places where I thought you would need them. Now that I understand a little bit better about what this actually entails and like how very little space it is, then having a really high point value for that little space doesn't make sense the same way. So I think the points, this was again, priority versus points. Now that I understand the points, I don't think they should be that high.
And actually, this is one where we actually had two conflicting options here. One was to keep that as high, up to, the other one is the exact opposite, and it's taking it down to medium, low. And so I think that one was more based off of staffs looking at the points and the gives, because the existing points are so, they're giving so much that they're giving several floors in return for a build out of restaurants and shelves, and it's giving a good chunk of, for the emergency staging. So just to point that out, there were two options here. The bigger impact one isn't necessarily the emergency staging, although I'm comfortable with keeping it low because it is, the impact on the building and versus giving them extra stories is out of whack. It's even more out of whack for the build up for the restaurant use in the shelves. So just because you do a restaurant use in the shell doesn't necessarily mean you should automatically get two extra stories, which is the point adjustment. And so, so that's where we were hoping then, potentially this might be a combination of the two, that we were supportive of the child friendly one, that's not a major impact. We would actually support, be more supportive of the build up for restaurant uses going down, and the emergency management staging, keeping at that lower level as well comparatively.
Yeah, I think this is one of those where having the numbers really helps see the question. Does anyone have counters? No? Okay, so I think we're going to drop the points and priority on those.
Getting close to the end, here we go. Again, there are a number within this open space public art and culture, public amenities. It's just taking some of the numbers down in most cases. I did want to point out, and I put it in the bullet points in here too, that in order to get into this category, we have the, if you do it, you automatically get anywhere from five to 15 points, just in general, because it's giving us more amenitized open space. Then each of the item within the is a fractional number in many cases because it adds on to that give at the top, and then they just build on. And also because many of these items are much less expensive. So these, there's a lot of these that are like, oh, it's a couple hundred dollars or a couple thousand dollars. Some of them are more expensive. Don't get me wrong, some of these items are much more expensive. But that's the reason why you will see, these are in fractional points. So just keep that in mind. And so because they're in fractional points, the impacts of changing the prioritization on a lot of these, it's not significant. It's a minor change in the height and FAR, except for a couple of them.
All right, Commissioner Parna.
Yeah, I just wanted to actually revisit, I had my hand up for the previous one too, for the emergency management and storage. I had put in a very high for just the TOD area, partially because you've got a high density of people. My thought was, you know, you would want some kind of staging storage area, which is a good thing where, like, I was thinking in terms of overlay, right? Like, if you have a lot of, you would want a staging area somewhere there, if the buildings go up really high. But maybe I've got the wrong end of the stick here on this one. But that was my logic for wanting only overlay to go very high on the staging area for density sake. But coming back to the amenities, so thank you for sharing the fractional stuff, Becky, because that really helps. Because I wanted to, like, I was questioning why the very high for a splash pad, because in my head, they were all the very highs were at the same level. You know what I'm saying? So I personally am not, the splash pad, water play area, in my head, doesn't seem like a big thing. I don't know why it has to be called out separately. I understand, like, the picnic shelters and all of that makes a lot of sense. And installation for all abilities, I think, is a very important point. Because I think that's where we would want to focus to make sure that the whole idea of inclusive is basically that it's all abilities and all ages as well, right? So that is my logic behind whatever I put in here. So, yeah.
I'll bite. So for splash pads, I think that they actually merit that personally because they have to be plumbed. But so there needs to be some preparation ahead of time. But just if you have kids cooped up in hot weather, they're a really, really great way to enjoy the outdoors that time of year. I don't know that it necessarily is worth a very high. I'm not sure it really matters when we're looking at fractional pieces that much, back to Becky's point.
Right.
So.
Yeah, if it's also small, it really, in my head, it doesn't matter as much, because I did not know there's so tiny fractions. But I would not put a picnic shelter at the same weightage as a splash pad. Not to say that we shouldn't have splash pads, but I'm saying that a picnic shelter is far more flexible in use than a splash pad, from an inclusive or all residents perspective. But I don't know, I'm starting to get terribly confused. So I'm going to leave it at that right now.
There's many, many styles. Does anyone else have opinions on this, or should, Commissioner Copley?
Yeah, I agree with both of you. I think maybe picnic seating shelter, super important, everyone can use it. The splash pad still though, and parent of three-year-old and one-year-old here, saved my butt in Redmond last summer. We were out there quite a bit when it was really hot. I couldn't just take him out in the grass, it'd be too hot, when it was in the 90s and things. So we would go out to the splash pad, we met neighbors, we made a couple friends at the splash pad, which is great. So maybe we go to a high. I'd propose going to high on the splash pad and leaving the others more elevated, the picnic seating and shelter.
Sure. Nodding? Agreeing? Okay, yep, looks good.
Thank you for that. A few more in this same grouping, but it's in the outdoor recreation spaces. So there's pollinator habitat, off-leash dog area, low-impact, all ages park amenities, which is like the chess tables and those types of things. And the outdoor fitness stations. So again, it's just a combination of different adjustments. I believe all of these are from Commissioner Parna. And again, it's minimal impact making these adjustments.
So Commissioner Parna, just given that we're really tight on time right now, if there are any of these that you strongly feel about, now that you can see the points?
So they're very small. I'm okay with it. But the pollinator habitat in overlay didn't make sense. There's nothing to pollinate, like, you know, it's nice to have these urban gardens, but beyond a point, it doesn't work. It has to have somewhere else to go. That was my, like, it was a logical thing. And the dog leash area, again, I kind of, I'm looking at it from a perspective of highly dense place, where would you put it? So, but that's just me, so.
I do want to, on the pollinator habitat, Park staff in the update of the parks plan talked about the need for the upper level pollinator habitats. So the podium tops, the rooftops, it's, those are the places where we absolutely need additional pollinator habitats. And so that's why we still have them as very, very high in our urbanized areas, because we're hoping to get those into the landscaping of those spaces.
Yeah, I actually, so I largely agree with Commissioner Parna's feedback on almost all of this. I disagreed with these ones. I like the original priorities better. I think people really care about their dogs in apartments. People like seeing living things, even if they're in a city. The outdoor fitness stations, I like. Just in general, like, I think these are very high value additions. So I wouldn't, I'd be very hesitant to drop the priority, how are other people feeling? Seeing some nodding. Commissioner Copley?
Just going to echo the same things. I'd keep it as was.
All right, nodding. So I think we're going to keep it as original before the proposal.
Getting really close to the end. Public art and culture, some adjustments down sensory art and sensory rest areas from the very highs and the medium highs to mediums and medium lows and lows. What was the rationale on this one?
That would be me. Again, I thought they were all weighted the same, like, so interactive sensory art weighed against, because I hadn't seen these points, right? So we can leave it as is, you know, because they're very tiny points. I mean, that's okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So is that our final? Did we do well with incentives? All right, nice work, everyone. Any further questions on incentives, Becky?
All right. Thank you very much. I will take all of your feedback in, and in your next packet, we will have an updated version of all of this with the adjusted point system. Hopefully, that will be our final version, but you'll have one last chance to take a look at it at your next meeting.
All right. Thank you for all your work on this. Would people like a five-minute break before affordable housing? Okay, so we will be back at 8:50. So we are going to continue our study session on incentives and requirements in the 2025 code package for Redmond 2050, and specifically our final topic tonight, which is affordable housing. Ian.
Thank you, Chair. And so the discussion in front of the commission tonight is to provide staff with direction on a final recommendation for the affordability parameters. staff with direction on a final recommendation for the affordability parameters. As a reminder, the inclusionary zoning is part of the Redmond zoning code, and so that will be formally under the purview of the Planning Commission. The MFTE will be aligned, but that is, it won't be actually a part of these materials, just because that's not the Planning Commission's purview. But please know, staff will update that in harmony with the Planning Commission recommendation. In front of us, we have the staff discussion, where we have a 15% at 50% AMI for Marymore. That seems to be the focus of most of the discussion. To recap, the main question in front of us is whether we want to do a step-down transitionary provision or go directly to the full change. I think that is the first area of consensus building for the Commission.
And so I think the way that I want to structure this conversation, so, because I know we can all talk about this for a long time, is to try to get to a point where I want people to own what they would prefer. And so if you could start with what you prefer, and if you want to include a rationale, I think that's fine. We've had so much good information between the models, and then the ongoing discussion fostered in the issues matrix. So if we could start there with preferences, I think that would be great. I might go first, just to give an example. So I'm comfortable with the option as written. So that would be 15% at 50%. And my rationale for that is that I really see Marymore as being a location that would benefit highly from that mix, especially with the light rail there and the access to amenities. I think that it's very consistent with the goals and the priorities that were chosen by the Planning Commission and then approved by council in the Redmond 2050 process. I think it's backed by the community. So I really appreciate the feedback from developers especially, who've come in with, especially at this final stage. I know they've been in contact with the city. There's been a lot of back and forth over the years, but I can appreciate why they're coming in at the last moment and saying they would like more. I'm comfortable, though, with the city recommendation. I think it's the right thing for the community. So that would be mine. Who else would like to chime in if you disagree or agree? Commissioner Van Nyman?
So I think I'm comfortable with the way things are. I think that's where I'm leaning. But I do also want to, I want to revisit the step-down. I think if I recall correctly from the discussion, we're not going to get a lot out of it, but I just want to see that again. But I wanted to share something that I read, and I have spent a lot of time thinking about this, like, from an economics standpoint, because values are one thing, but will it work is, you know, when the rubber meets the road, we may aspire to certain things, but we can misfire and may not get what we really were asking for. So I've spent a lot of time trying to understand whether these things are really feasible and how they work from an economic standpoint. And I read an article. It was pretty dated, so I would definitely be interested in learning more about newer examples. But the main thing that I walked away from, and I wanted to share with people, and some of you are going to laugh at me, because you've heard me talk about this before, and you've probably explained it to me before, and I didn't hear it, but I'm going to say that it sunk in this time. The main driver for the inclusionary zoning and what makes it different is that you are, as you've discussed, clawing back some of the value in the, what you're, and what you've talked about is the, like, the increased height that you're giving them. But what I never really thought about before, and that finally made it really all sink in, is that you're clawing back the public investment in the infrastructure in the area that led for the land to appreciate in the first place. So when landowners come to us and say, "My property is worth 20 million today." Okay. And you're going to claw some of that back, and then my property will only be worth 14. Okay. But before the light rail came in, and before all the public infrastructure went in around you, your property was worth 4 million. So we've, you know, the community, the public tax dollars, specifically the light rail, in the case of Marymore, have, your land has appreciated considerably because of the public tax dollars, and on the land that you happen to own. So that really helped me understand the public value that you're pulling back, that the people, all of the people, all of the taxpayers have paid into the pot that let your specific property appreciate. And now we're going to take some of that value back. Will it work? I hope so. Thank you. Other Commissioners?
Commissioner Parnell?
Thank you. I was waving at you. So I really like what Tara just said, and I think that that's a phenomenal argument to make. I completely support the 15% proposal without a step-down. The other reason why I would completely support this is that we are trying to do right by the community. If we need to take, bring that down from 15% to 12% later because some things aren't working, we have the option to. But right now, we are changing everything. We are ramping up and building so much and having so many incentives that allow people to build a whole lot more. So I think this is an opportunity, not just from a unit cost standpoint, not an opportunity cost, but an opportunity for the city to do something right for the affordability piece. So keep the proposal as is. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Kopley?
I have to say, I've been strongly swayed by Tara's comment, Commissioner Tara's comment. So I will say that I am also concerned about a misfire. We've spent $1.5 billion extending from Microsoft to Marymore. So that's $500 million a mile. And I want to see people move into those places, so they have to be built. So my new proposal, as opposed to going to 10% for the first, you know, three developments, would be that we do a step-up provision, maybe first development at 12%, second at 13%, third at 14%, everything's at 15 after that. It's not much. It's certainly not what's being asked from, you know, the development community and the owners in that area, but it's something. And I do think that development is like a snowball. You kick one ball down the hill, and then a lot of other balls start rolling, and it gets bigger and bigger. But it needs to start, and so that would be my revised proposal.
Commissioner Gagne?
I support the 15% at 50%, and I was convinced when Ian shared what he did about it being the core values of the 2050 and about it being based on community feedback, but then felt over the top based on Commissioner Van Nyman's, the way that you broke down the economics. So I appreciate all of those comments, and I fully support the staff recommendation.
Excellent. Anyone else? Mr. Chair, would you, or no?
I would say that Tara's made a really strong, opened my eyes to a different point of view, a deeper understanding and appreciation of the issue. And I would say that I'm supportive of the 15%.
Okay. So in that case, I'm hearing quite a bit of support for the proposal as written. Before we, before I ask for a motion on directing staff towards a recommendation, I do just want to emphasize again, one of the things that I really like about the Planning Commission is that anyone who doesn't feel comfortable voting for the majority opinion is always welcome to write a minority letter that goes to council. They do read it. We, I think most of us at this point have written one. It is absolutely an important way to get your point across, if you would like to. So I do just want to make sure that that's on everyone's radar. With that, I would look for a motion to ask staff to prepare a recommendation of approval at the next meeting. And I will say, this is pending the final edits in Section 2104. There were a few additional L comments that are going to be added to the table to qualify limited uses in that. So there still will be a few things for us to review next week that are, or next meeting. But do I have a motion for that recommendation?
Can I just, we revisit that step-down? Just, I want to see it again.
Oh.
What it looked like. I mean, I think I understand, I think I know where I am. I just want to refresh my memory.
Ian, would you ever be able to bring that up? Great.
So for Marymore, we see the yield on costs in the first column with no step-down, 4.1, 3.7. If we did that initial yield on cost where we had three steps, yield on costs increased by 0.1. And then if we had the big one step where it was just 10% for the whole thing, it was still 4.2 and 3.8. I will again remind that, in reality, the actual yield on cost would be expected to be much higher because of all of those other considerations that are not included in the model, and also that this is, this is a relatively, because the step-down is proportioned to be consistent with the overlake proportion, the overall amount of units is relatively small. It's 171 units for the total step-down. Exactly.
So that would be like one building?
Very plausibly, yeah.
Less than a building. But I mean, it's one developer. You're talking about one person would get that offer.
Correct. And they would see maybe 0.1 yield on cost, which would be unlikely to kickstart development.
I don't know. For the number of families that could live here with the additional housing, I would prefer to leave as is.
Well, I just think it's cleaner at this point. That, I mean, I'm not sure what it really gets you. I mean, in theory, I like the idea of a step-down, and we did it in overlake. I just don't think that the numbers transferred to Marymore.
Well, and overlake was, just again, that step-down provision was because we knew there was an issue with the comps. So like, there was an issue with financing there. And I don't think the same thing applies. Like, it just, it's not the same spur in my eyes. Any further comments? All right. In that case, I will ask again, would anyone like to make a motion to ask staff to prepare a recommendation of approval at the next meeting? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Any abstain? No. Okay, so that is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners. So we'll bring a draft Planning Commission report for your next meeting, and we will point out the edits and the additional information in 2104 that are being adjusted. So thank you.
All right. Thanks for all the work, everyone. With that, we have a very brief study session on the zones and uses in the 2025 code package for Redmond 2050. If anyone, we haven't had any new comments or issues, but I do want an opportunity for anyone to have one if they need some. I think we've covered everything already in the other session.
We really only have a few minutes on the agenda, because we just wanted to point out that all of the edits that you had directed staff to make have been made and republished. So we do have new versions published with this package of 2105, 2108, 2110, 12, 13, and 14. We didn't make any edits to 2115, so that has not been republished. But the issues matrix is finalized, and all of the edits that Planning Commission have asked us to make have been made on those. So those should be ready with no changes next week.
Great. Thank you. And then, as discussed earlier, so we were supposed to have a briefing on the annual code cleanup training. I think, given that our conversation ran long, so we could finish our work on zoning code, that we will move that to a future meeting?
Sounds great.
Yep. Okay, great. When we can actually focus. All right. So with that, staff and Commissioner updates?
Thank you, Chair. Again, next week is the curveball for all the Commissioners, because you will be meeting not on a Wednesday, but on a Tuesday, to have your joint meeting with council. The two main topics will be about design standards and, of course, the Planning Commission's work programming. As a reminder, same building, same time, everyone sits down, kind of does a quick round of introductions, values, background, and then just hops into the content. As another reminder, the agenda for that council meeting is pretty packed, so the conversation might go relatively quickly. But that is January 28th. Then, first meeting of February is on the 12th. And this is when we're going to start doing a lot of trainings. We're going to talk about the annual docket, and we're going to talk about functional plans. All of you have done such great work on the comprehensive plan, now we're going to get more granular. How are we going to implement that community vision? And that's what functional plans are for. At that meeting, the hope is that the draft recommendation and reports that is provided would get approval. And the reason for that is that we are planning to take it to council later that same month. What does that mean for everyone here? Please let us know if you are going to be absent. We need to make sure we have a quorum, so we can make a vote on those items. But other than that, it's just going to be more quality time together in 2025. Chair, back to you.
One quick clarification and addition. The design standards conversations with your joint meeting with council is just a clarification of what's in this package that is coming up versus what's happening in the next project that's kicking off. And so it's just setting the context for that, so that they know as they start to see what's moving forward, where their asks are landing. And your review of this year's package of design standards into the nitty-gritty starts in February as well. So, and we have a community workshop on February 4th.
Any Commissioner updates? Commissioner Van Nyman?
Just remind people about the meeting tomorrow night over at the Community Center, 5:30 with the City Council and the mayor, a town hall.
Could you give more details?
Right. It's a town hall-type meeting. Do you, are you familiar with how it's going to work? No? Anyway, I just saw the email today that it's a town hall-type meeting with the City Council and the mayor at 5:30 tomorrow at the Community Center.
Great. Thank you. Any other Commissioner updates? No. In that case, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we are adjourned.